Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting, October 18th, 2012, at 7:00 PM. Those who would, please stand and join us for the prayer and the pledge. We have Boy Scout troop 297 joining us and participating with our pledge and our prayer.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which we stand, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, please bow with me. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for letting us all come out to this meeting. And let's hope it goes well and safe. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Would you give him a hand, please? Thank you. You may be seated. We promote young leadership in our community, and I want to thank the Scout Masters for being a part and sharing their gentleman with us. Thank them for being interested in community service and learning about our government. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number three is citizens' comments. We have on citizens' comments, Mr. Kyle Stewart. Would you approach the podium, please? You have three minutes to share your comments. Thank you.
My name is Kyle Stewart. I am new to the Fairview community since March, moved from Nashville. Although I spent several years coming to Fairview by grain and feed for my animals on the farm. I live right behind the middle school, down on Cumberland Road. I was a little bit disturbed when I moved to Fairview to see the LED sign going up in front of the Jingle Market where our guest has us called the Hickory Home Barbecue Restaurant. Especially driving home at night, I leave for work before the sun comes up, and I come home from work when the sun is going down. So it's getting dark earlier these days, especially when it's raining, if anyone has driven by that. I've called and spoken to all the commissioners, lots of voicemails from Mr. Stewart, including Mr. Bissell, and thank all of you for speaking to me. But if you've driven by that sign at night, you know how much of a safety concern that is. And I am a senior instructor in the Williamson County 4-H program. I teach shooting sports in Franklin to middle and high school students. We did not have a single safety incident in our program because we promote safety. Anything that can be a safety hazard, we remove from the premises, we remove from the presence of those children. And with all those kids walking up and down that street, this morning when I was going to work at 6:00 o'clock in the morning, there was a young lady walking down there carrying her backpack. And that sign, if you'll notice, it flashes white in between the messages, as you'll sit out there and watch it. At night, you'll see how much that illuminates. And then trying pulling out that street, pull out that street and try to look west down Highway 100, all you see is that light blinding you. You cannot see a car, headlights. All you see is that sign. I have a background as well in audiovisual, working in Nashville for several high, big-name artists. So with my experience dealing with LED signs, I know that you get your clarity from the number of LEDs per square foot, you get your brightness by the size of those LEDs. So judging by just looking at that sign, it is way too bright. The LEDs are way oversized for that sign, because all you have to do is look. It's a stadium. Brightness is what it is for a big outdoor concert. It's very bright. You will not see anything, I've traveled all over the country, and I have never seen anything at ground level right next to the road like that where it is in your eyes. It's either up or down, or doesn't shine in your eyes, and you can see the road, or it sits back off. I have never, anywhere around the country, seen anything like that. And I hope that we can, as a community, take the steps to get that corrected. The last thing I want to see is a driver driving down there and being blinded and running into a car or running over a child. That, in my opinion, would be the absolute worst thing for this community, all because it could have been something that could be corrected by lifting that sign up or moving it back off the road. So I just hope that we can get that corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Item number four on the agenda is awards and recognitions.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make a note to Keith Paisley tonight, make a presentation to Keith Paisley. We did get a presentation from the Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $500, a check, a donation to the recreation program at the park. And this is for programming, and I'd like to present this to Keith Paisley. And thank you, Chamber.
Just a couple quick things. Family, sorry. Family, follow. Fun Day is this Saturday, October 20th, from 10 to 4. There'll be kids, crafts, and pumpkins, and food, hayrides up to the dome. Hunter Trail is also the 26th and 27th, from 7 to 11.
Thank you. Any other awards or recognitions from the board? Any from staff?
No, ma'am, no further.
Next item is public announcements.
Mayor, we'd like to let everyone know that the early voting has begun, and we do have brochures in the lobby that explain early voting, talk about the photo ID law and that sort of thing, and who's exempt from these laws and what are required. So there's a brochure out in the lobby, should anyone need to pick that up.
I would like to also let the public know that the Fairview Area Chamber of Commerce is working together with Keep Williamson Beautiful again this year. We will be having a clean sweep, that is, across the city of Fairview. You can just work in your neighborhood, or you can show up for the event. It will take place from 8:00 AM to 12:00 in the parking lot of Bank of America, and that is November, Saturday, November 3rd, for the purpose of just showing that we take pride in our community, and we want to pick up any litter, help out anywhere, gather together, and then just say our part, that we're taking care of Fairview. Secondly, I'd like to, with drumroll, please, announce the grand opening of State Route 840, November 2nd, 2012. Governor Bill Haslam and Transportation Commissioner John Shore has invited us to the grand opening of State Route 840 Friday, November 2nd, 2012, at 11:00 AM in the morning. It celebrates the completion of this major highway in Middle Tennessee and acknowledges a job well done by TDOT and all its partners. Numerous members of the transportation industry, communities, state, and local leaders are essential and have been in this completion of the important and enormous journey. The festivals will begin at 11:00, followed by an official opening at 1:00 PM. The celebration concludes at 1:30 with an Enjoy the Ride Parade. You can access the event at Carter's Creek or Columbia Pike. The grand opening will be held rain or shine. I'd like to just acknowledge the hard work of everyone that's had their hands in this 840 expansion, from I-40 East to I-40 West, and we are just a participant in that as we have our exit at 100 Highway. So everybody who can be a part, do so. If nothing else, just make sure over the weekend you find time to drive a mile or two on our new 840 state route. I think it's a wonderful addition to the western side, and as we are Fairview, we are the western frontier of Nashville. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I just had one thing I would like to add. I just had an opportunity to speak to Larry Richards, who's on the Helping Hands Board. And Helping Hands is the local food pantry, and he shared with me how dangerously low they are going into the holidays, and they could really use food donations and, of course, monetary donations. So if y'all would just keep that in mind, I just thought I would announce it at the beginning while everybody was here, so.
Thank you. Any other public announcements? Moving on, the approval of the minutes that has been deferred.
Move for approval.
Second. We have a first and a second for a deferral?
They're just third.
All those in favor? Up in, please. Thank you. All right, moving on, our O Business, 7A, second and final reading of Bill 2012-12.
Bill number 2012-12, ordinance number 791, an ordinance to amend City of Fairview, Tennessee Municipal Code Title VIII, alcoholic beverages, Chapter 1, intoxicating liquors, Section 8-107, Pren 4, retailers licenses, limitation on number of licenses to be issued.
Move for approval.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
No.
I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote. Commissioner Sutton?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
I say aye. Vice Mayor?
Nay.
Commissioner Carroll?
Aye.
Just wanted to clarify. Thank you. 7B, second and final reading of Bill 2012-13.
An ordinance number 792, an ordinance for an amendment to the City of Fairview, Tennessee budget for fiscal year 2012-2013 budget.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve, second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 7C is discuss and/or take action on City of Fairview projects. Thank you, City Manager Hyatt, for preparing our updated list on the projects. Appreciate that very much. We have some information that is now updated as far as what's going out to bid. Would you like to address any of those items, sir?
I will, yes, ma'am. I've been in touch with the Recreation Services with State of Tennessee on our LPRF grant for the Greenway, and they are waiting for it to be signed off and sent back to us. They did not have any updated information, but I would imagine, based off of where we are in the process, that it would be forthcoming very soon. Lake Van Path has been put on hold temporarily. The next thing is the Triangle School Project. It is underway. I was down there yesterday, I believe, and they are working diligently to get that accomplished. And the final date for that, the date for it to be finalized is November 26th, and so that is on schedule. Streetlights, Don has spoken with the Mill Tennessee Electric, and we're waiting on them to come back to us and let us know what is their schedule going to be for installing the lights. The welcome signs, we have put the project out for bid, and a bid opening will be November 8th here at City Hall. Safe routes to school, we are waiting now. We are about to get to the point where we're going to be doing a survey down there to see exactly where the right-of-ways and where the easements are, so we can move forward with that program. And also, coming up, I believe, on November 3rd, I'm gonna say that, that might not be exactly right, but somewhere around there, and I'll get that date to you, there's going to be a Safe Routes to School informational program at the Bowie Park. They've asked to have the one in the Middle Tennessee region here in Fairview. So that'll be coming up then, and I'll get that information out to you via email, and I'll have more at the next meeting. The other active transportation and the TDOT paving, both are probably going to try to get those next year, next summer, but we have until 2015 to accomplish those projects. So they will be in front of us, and we'll try to move them as quickly as possible. The park survey is currently on the web, on the webpage. We, I sent an email to y'all this week, and it said we're getting about anywhere from, I think, 10 to 25 a day, 10 to 25 a week, is what I should say. On average, it seems to be, if we average from the time we started to right now, it's probably 30 to 40 a week. I continue to get them. Even today, I got about five. So they continue to roll in. We're gonna take that down off the website, November 30th. We are going to come up with another survey that's gonna ask some questions about, you know, what type of amenities or services the citizens would like to see as we go into our budget process. So maybe that could be something that we discuss and look at, probably try to put it up on December 1st, and maybe take it down around February 28th. When we take it down on November 30th, we will then calculate everything. We'll be able to get a spreadsheet of all the information input and what was returned. One thing that we will be able to also know is if people continually put one in there and said the same thing over and over and over to build that up, because we do have IP addresses. We won't be emailing people back, but it will, just gives us a way of keeping records of how many people put surveys in and the information. So that'll be readily available. Probably the first meeting in December, we'll have that information out. We are, Mayor and I have talked a little bit, and we're kind of discussing a strategic plan session, a planning session again for the city coming up, probably in January, February, so keep that in front of you. The park five-year strategic plan, obviously the park board will be working on that with Keith, what else? The Fairview Boulevard widening, obviously that project is completed. The completion date for us, it was 10/21/2012 on the original plan, so they beat their deadline, so they did an excellent job. And I would imagine we will be seeing traffic light, probably, I would imagine the next four to six weeks, we'll see some things down there, because it took about a three-to-five month process, so we're probably almost three months in, so we'll be getting close to that. So hopefully, no later than the first of the year, I would imagine that we will start seeing some action down there.
Excellent. Thank you for that report. Appreciate it. There was a projects and projected fund balances attached to this. Was there anything that we needed to address?
I don't believe so at this time, unless Crystal has anything she wants to add there at all, but I believe everything is up to date. There have been no changes since the last meeting.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from the board? So action is needed?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. We'll move on. 8A, new business, discuss and/or take actions or recommendations from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Director LaVorn?
From the last Board of Zone Appeals meeting, they wanted to send a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. They've got a, one member of that board that probably has only been to probably three meetings in the past three years, and sometimes they have a problem of having a quorum, so it's kind of embarrassing when you bring people into this building for action, taking on a request that they've got before you, and you don't have enough people to take care of the action. So they're asking this board to consider removing Mr. William Seaborn from the Board of Zone Appeals and replace him.
What are the wishes of the board?
My, pardon my mispronouncing, I've attached that to our openings for forward positions, so we can advertise that as well.
Second, is that a motion? Okay. Is that a motion for accepting of the recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Second. We have first and second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Item 8B, new business, discuss and/or take action on term limits for mayor seat and city commissioner seats. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. I, one of the things that I heard a lot when I was running myself is people asked about term limits. They made the comment they wish we had term limits, so I just wanted to bring it up today for us to discuss once again, see where we stand. So I would like to make a motion that we put term limits on the mayor's seat and city commissioners.
Would you have any timeframe on that motion?
Time frame?
When you say term limits.
Well, we would just put in place term limits. I mean, we'd have to figure out when that would start, what dates. I mean, we could, maybe, would you have something to add?
Yes. The process is relatively simple. The time limits would not be imposed, the implementation would not be imposed by this board, nor can this board put those term limits on. The election of commissioners under the charter that we have is under Chapters 18 through 23 of Title VI of the Tennessee Code, actually 18 through 22. Chapter 23 was repealed in 1988. If the board is serious about this, the first thing you would need to do is have a meeting with your state representative and/or the state senator, or both, because there is no provision in our charter for term limits, and this board derives its authority from the charter. To do that would require a charter amendment. Now, that's not really that difficult, but it has to be done on the state level first. In 2010, the cities that are chartered under the, we're on, we're the City Manager Commission Charter, the ones that are chartered under Chapter 3 of Title VI, which is the Mayor Alderman Charter, back in 2010, Farragut, the little city that everybody passes on the way to Knoxville, wanted to place term limits, and they got passed through the legislature, Public Chapter Number 999 of the Public Acts of 2010, in which the legislature simply added a section to the code of Chapter 3, which was 6-3-110, which set up the mechanism for the board to place term limits. And what it required, and I think that's what would be required here, if the legislature would not do that, I don't think specifically for an individual city, although they a lot of times do that, but if they added an individual section, they would not be, I don't think they'd be that opposed to it, because they're not telling any city they've got to do it. They're just giving them the option of doing it. And the ones that you typically see is the board, the sitting board, after the legislature passes the authority for the board to implement term limits, is something to the effect that the local board passes an ordinance placing the term limits on. They usually do it by two-thirds majority, and then they call a special election or the election, if you were close to a general election, it has to be submitted to the citizens for ratification of that ordinance. And if it is ratified, then the term limits are placed as they are laid out in the ordinance. But those term limits, and as I said, it's relatively simple to get them implemented, but they do not, constitutionally, they cannot be applied until, to the people who are sitting at that time. They would apply to the persons who are elected at the next regular election, is when your term limits would go into place. But your first thing that you would need to do is come to a conclusion that you want to pursue term limits, and then have that meeting with the state representative and/or the state senator, or both.
Well, one of the things that, with the state representatives, we did meet with them prior on other topics, and basically, they said if we voted it in, they would be happy to take anything we requested, to, you know, and, you know, try to get it passed through for us. So basically, I feel like the first step is if we want to discuss it, I've made a motion, somebody can second, we can discuss how we would do it, what we want to do, if everybody's for it, or, you know, we can move forward. But it has been something mentioned before, and I do believe that that is one of the biggest problems we have right now, both on local, state, and federal levels, is we get people in the office, and they're there too long. And I think it's a positive thing. I don't think it's bad. We can take it, we can put it in place, and, you know, if we decide that they sit out four years and want to run again, the people elect them, then that's fine, or we may decide that that's it. You know, it's just something that we can carry forward from, you know, and discuss.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? I second it for discussion. Open discussion?
Commissioner Carroll, I'd like to ask you a question now that we're in discussion. Are you basically saying that you would like to penalize the American people, should they have a good representative that they want to continue to send to that office? If you impose term limits on them, you would in fact be doing that. And the question is, how many terms are state representatives limited to? Do you know?
The state, no.
You don't know?
No, they, they're not limited.
And what about senators?
Senators, they're not limited.
What about the county commission?
They're not limited, and that's the problem. That's what people complain about.
So how many people in the last three months have complained to you about that?
You know, it's something, as I talk to people, it's something that they would like seeing. Now, it's something, if we want to put it on the ballot, you know, like the city attorney said, and let the people vote, let's see. I mean, it's, the time is now to discuss it. Maybe you've never heard anybody talk about it, but I hear it, and I've heard it several times. So, you know, my job is to bring what I hear from the people up here.
Do you feel that one term would be sufficient?
Do I feel?
One term should be?
Well, if the people are happy with me being in one term, yeah. I mean, if they want me a second term, that's fine, but I really think the...
No, I'm saying, do you think we should just stop it? You get four years, and then that's it?
Well, that's fine.
Then it's time for somebody else? Do you think, I mean, is that what they're saying they want? Nobody has ever discussed that with me the entire time I've served this city.
It has been discussed with me multiple times. I mean, so it is a public concern, obviously.
Evidently, it must be, but I mean, I've never heard that one single time.
Well, I mean, Commissioner, I mean, Vice Mayor Bissell said it a couple weeks ago in a meeting, that he thought there should be term limits, so we've heard it up here.
So what political positions have term limits?
Well, here's the thing about it is...
Is that you don't know the answer to the question?
No. I've already answered your question, but this is not a debate for me. Your discussion is to us.
I'm just asking you, or anybody, anybody can answer, how many part-time politicians have term limits?
Well, there might be other local, local levels. I've not researched, like, what communities that have that, and maybe that's something, you know, if you would like to research and let me know to correct me.
Oh, I mean, I don't, I don't know the answers. I couldn't sit here and tell you every one of them. I just know that you would effectively be taking the vote away from a person that might want to vote for somebody that you're saying they can't do it anymore. If you're not doing a good job, I'm quite certain they're gonna vote you out. But to say that people have been somewhere too long, evidently somebody thinks they're doing a good job, because people continue to reelect them. So I don't see how you can make the statement saying that people are there, they're doing bad, they're, they're, it's, they've been there too long.
Well, no. It's not a personal attack. It's really not. I'm just bringing something citizens have complained about, and it wasn't just, say, here. It's been on every level. That's why... That's why I mentioned state and federal. I can't change the state and federal, but I have, I can be the voice for our citizens.
You could change the state and federal as well.
Well, I could.
You could lead a coalition.
Well, I'm just saying, the citizens elected me right now, so I thought while I'm sitting in this seat, I would take the opportunity, if this is a concern, to bring it up. Y'all don't want it, that's fine, don't vote it in. If you get out while you're running right now and you ask the people, you might find out that it's not just one person or two, you know, people, that a lot of people feel the same way right now. So, you know, if you want to put it on, you know, a ballot and let the people vote, let's see what they say.
Other discussion?
I've had a couple discussions, people, as early as yesterday, they weren't sure, but they had heard this was coming up, along the agenda. And they asked me about it. And let me start off by saying, at this time, I have no intentions of running for this office again. Two terms is it for me at this time. That's all I can tell you. If it was, will ever be considered, I think it definitely needs to be considered through a referendum by all the citizens here, and not just us on this board, because it is their right to vote as often as possible. I would hate to know that a person that has been on here two terms, that was doing a fantastic job, and the majority of the people in this city felt that way, that they can no longer serve their community. So if we did what Larry suggested, we started at the top and worked our way down to a referendum, I'd have a problem at all with it. But I think it should be done that way, rather than us sitting here voting on it and saying, you know, we're going to take that right away, because it's a duty for people to do, and it's a duty for us to make sure they have that choice, and nothing else to be there. So, yeah, if it's sent through a referendum, I don't have any problem with it.
Well, and that's fair. You know, what, this is, all I wanted to do is bring it out for us to discuss, is something that we have discussed, and we, you know, I brought it in the first couple months I was in office, because it was that fresh. People had requested it, they had said it, but we kind of, it was only for discussion purposes, and we never determined that we wanted to do anything or not. Vice Mayor brought it up a couple meetings ago, and I thought it's a great time, right now, you know, to discuss it and see if we want to do something. I, I mean, Commissioner Sutton, if that's, you know, how the board wants to do it, I think it's great. I'd love for the people to vote on it, if that's what they want. Commissioner Johnson, I understand what you're saying. I do. I understand that you get somebody that's working hard, and the people want to reelect them, that's fine, too. But there's options in there, you know. We have a commissioner and mayor seat. They could do their two terms as commissioner and run for mayor, and they get the mayor to do two more terms. I don't know. There's options, the way you can do it.
Oh, yeah. You wouldn't have to stop it at two terms. You could say it was three, or you could say it was one, or, but the thing is, the citizens have the right to put that on the ballot.
I agree.
And if 10% of the registered voters of the city fairview want that on the ballot, they can have it put on there.
Okay.
There's the answer right there.
Other discussion? Mr. Cantrell?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you share with, well, myself or others that might want to hear, just the position that would need to be taken to have it on a referendum?
Okay, there's, there's two ways to do that. Let me digress for just one second. The, I'm sure there's others in the state, but the one place that I'm very familiar with, that I know has term limits, is Metro Nashville. They put term limits on when the charter amendment, back, I believe, in the early 90s, limits councilmen to two terms, the mayor to two terms. And obviously, I mean, they could not apply it until that person came up for election the next time. And when, the first time that they, the term limits caught people, they lost about half the council. Some people have been there 25, 30 years, because they couldn't run again because of the term limits. Maybe that's what the people wanted, that's what they got. There's two ways to do that. One, you can go ahead and, if you were going to go to the state representative, I would suggest that the board pass a resolution, which obviously we don't have prepared tonight, but we could prepare one, asking them to shepherd the legislation through that would allow city manager, commissioner-type legislative bodies to implement term limits. The other, if you wanted to get the public opinion first, would be, as Commissioner Johnson said, that people could petition that, and it would be put, it would be a special election or a general election if it was, obviously, it couldn't be on this one. You couldn't get anything on this election, because that time has long passed. The other would be that the board pass a resolution asking for a referendum on should this board pursue term limits, and lay out what the board would suggest that those term limits be, and call a special election, the election commission would call it, city would pay for it, and have a referendum on that resolution, should term limits, should this board pursue term limits. Obviously, you can't, after the referendum, part of that pursuit would be getting the state legislature to put the legislation through, allowing you to do that, because as our charter presently stands, that authority is not vested in this board, and they cannot do that. You can send out a referendum to get input from the people, if you so desire, before you did pursue it, or you could just go have the legislation in there. As I said, if every city that has a city manager, commissioner-type government has that, charter has that authority, they don't have to implement it. And if the state does it, similar to what the ones that they have implemented before, it would require a referendum before the ordinance would be, it could be implemented anyway.
So the referendum to the public would be through the state legislation?
No, the referendum could be two ways. You could have a referendum asking, without the state participating, asking if they want this board to pursue term limits and lay out what the term limits you're proposing. Or you could pass a resolution asking the state representative to give that authority to all local boards who have a city manager, commissioner-type charter, and have them lay out the similar type things to what they've already done, and I assume that you would want to do that. And I don't think the legislature would enact that unless allowing you to pass an ordinance placing term limits that does not, would not have to be ratified by the public in a referendum.
What would us as a board have to do to get a referendum to the public?
Well, there's, if you get the legislature to pass that, you would suggest to them a manner in which you would want that done, and that would be, it would have to be passed. The one that they have now, for example, requires a two-thirds approval by the local legislative body, and then that ordinance has to be submitted to a yes or no vote by referendum that's required in the statute. The other way would be to pass a resolution asking for a referendum on should you pursue the issue of term limits, and lay that out, and get the public to vote on that first, and then you'd have to take the same route to the state that you would have to take if you don't get the referendum. In other words, state legislature is going to have to enact legislation allowing you to place term limits. You don't have that authority. It's not in the charter. The only charter that I know that it's in is the one that they revised in 2010. And I don't think the legislature has a big problem with that, because, as I said, it doesn't command any local legislative body to implement term limits. It just gives them the authority to do that if they so desire. But either way, you're going to have to have a referendum, either if you do it, saying, do you want us to pursue this, or do you do it as a result of the legislation, saying, this is what we propose?
Okay. Other discussion?
I have a question. Do, if, in doing the referendum, is it, are we required to, like, go through the election commission and pay the money, and have the ballot set up, and so forth and so on?
Yes, sir.
So, so the next available time for us to do that would be in two years?
No, sir. You could call, you could ask the board to have a special election, but you'd still have to pay for it.
Yeah. And that's what, what, $6,000?
That's more expensive than having it on the general election, because they're going to have an election anyway.
Yeah.
But if you ask for a special election, the county commission will have that election, but it's more expensive, and it will, I don't know how much more expensive, but I'm sure they don't pay $6,000 for this one that's coming up in two weeks.
Yeah, this one, yeah.
Is it? Okay. But you'd be having another one.
Well, I can, I can tell you, based upon a personal conversation I had with our new state representative, that Mr. Durham would prefer that if we want to make changes like this to the charter, that we do everything we're supposed to do before we refer it to him, and that we look at the charter in its whole, and not piecemeal changes. If we've got several things, three or four items in there that we want to change in the charter, then we, he'd like to have them all at one time, so he's not asking his colleagues five different times to make a change. He's just want him and Senator Johnson to only have to deal with it one time, so.
Good point.
I don't know that we've, I'm not against the referendum. I think asking the publics what we ought to do first, but I do think that we might always spend some time looking at the charter at home, and see if there are other things, issues in there that we would want to tackle, and just do it all at once. So if we did have to have a referendum to handle this part, we, there might be something else in there that we also need to have a referendum on. If we're going to pay the $6,000, we need to knock it all out one time.
Would they charge for each individual, or just the one time? I mean, the, all we're paying for is to get it on there is the, for the citizens to be able to vote, so...
Would that be for a special election?
Right, right.
Not just to get going to the regular...
I know, but I was kind of into what Vice Mayor was saying about...
I don't think the number of items, you wouldn't, you wouldn't pay for the number of items.
Yeah, so they wouldn't vote on it either.
Whether you have one or 10 would not be, would not make any difference.
If you did them piecemeal, if you did them one at a time, you would have a special election for every one, you would have to pay.
Well, we wouldn't, you're saying have the citizens vote on everything that you want to change about the charter, once you sit down?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that we should go through the charter, and we should have those items that we wish to be changed, and some other one may also need to be done, but I don't think everything needs to be on there.
There's a lot of questions, man. You know, I personally have been curious, and I've been explaining to one, while there's not two commissioners and two commissioners related at the same time, rather than three in one, I just, I don't understand that. And I know something happened years ago, that they changed that somewhere in the line, but, you know, to me, that would be the right way to do it. Two and two, mayor's an odd year, whatever the case may be, so that you can be innovative about what you're doing, better than three. But that's something we can consider, too.
The other one that comes to mind is the, is the thing that I think we were all caught off, a little off-guard with, the Board of Zoning Appeals, and how we're not in that line.
Right.
And I don't know whether that's by legislature or whatever, but, but I, I kind of felt like after we finished talking about that, that we were wanting to put ourselves in line there, to be the final say, that might be. So there's several items that, I guess, if we're going to undertake this, I think we ought to undertake the whole, whole bunch, not just piecemeal. But I don't have any problem against doing a referendum for the purpose of the term limits, and we'll see what the public wants.
The last one you mentioned would not require a charter change.
Wouldn't?
No, but it would require an ordinance. Ultimately, whatever, after the legislative people get through with it, the ultimate appeal is to the chance to record, whether it goes to zoning appeals, into the legislative board, and then to the chance to record. That's the one that would require a change, and I don't think you could change that one. I don't think the board would do that. Can't leave them without an appeal. But there's only, to my knowledge, there's only one city that does that, and that's Knoxville, that has the appeal from the, because of the fact that the zoning appeals board, it makes normally quasi-judicial decisions. The appeal of most people is not to the legislative board, but to the judicial, through the judicial system. I'm not saying that they can't, well, I think what they're a little bit afraid of is possible constitutional challenge, because you've got a potential, Knoxville has not been challenged on that, but you've got a potential quasi-judicial decision that goes to legislative board, and it could be argued that that's a breach of the, the separation of powers. But if it's out there, it can be done. That wouldn't have to be done by charter, as long as you didn't try to keep them from being able to appeal to the, the ultimate appeal would have to be to the chance to record.
It was in a mandatory, we have the industrial board?
Pardon me?
In a mandatory, this time under our charter, that we have to have the industrial board?
Uh, yes, but the...
There's a couple of them, I think, that's probably out of it, not.
Right.
I mean, rearboard is one of them, and another one.
Right. They, the...
They may not be discussed.
The one, addressing the other issues you were talking about is, and that bothers me, you don't see that in statutes very often, but the statute that sets up when elections are, has a provision in it that says, once this is adopted, it cannot be repealed or amended. And that's bothersome, because you don't see many legislative ordinances, statutes, whatever, that can't be amended. I have some problem with that, and I think you might be successful on something of that nature, but that's the only one that I, that comes to my mind, that says it can't be, it can't be repealed, it can't be amended.
I'd like to amend the motion that we defer this to a commission and work, staff workshop on the charter in, for January 17th, before the meeting, the second meeting of the month, January 17th at 5:30.
Do you approve that?
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have the original motion on the floor. Any other discussion?
Could you restate the original motion?
It was just to put it on, or to, what was it? Put in term limits?
Term limits on the mayor and the commissioner.
Yeah, it was basic.
Well, since we have agreed to work this issue on the 17th, wouldn't any vote be premature at this point?
I can, I mean, it's probably... I can remove it now, because we amended it, right?
You, you passed the amendment, you either have to, basically, all you did was have a motion to do what they've already done.
Could she remove her motion, and we place it on the agenda for that meeting?
She could do that.
Does she undertake action on?
You could do that, and just put your motion on the agenda for the meeting after the workshop.
I think it'd be the same thing.
Okay. I'll be glad to remove my motion.
I remove my second. And city manager, that was January 17th, 2013, 5:30, and we'll do a workshop before the Board of Commission meeting, please. Item number 8C, discuss and undertake action on employee deferred compensation program.
Thank you, Mayor. I am here to ask permission from the board to offer our employees a deferred compensation plan, a new deferred compensation plan. It would strictly be voluntary for each employee. We do currently have one through ING. They offer the 457 plan only, and I'm requesting to add the new plan, because it is through the state of Tennessee, which is also who our, our retirement service is, that the city fully funds for employees. This plan can also offer a 401K, as well as the 457, to our employees, and it can also be offered to every employee on payroll, whether you're part-time, whether you're an elected official, or you're a full-time employee. And I do have Ms. Casey Lance from the state of Tennessee in the audience, and Ms. Natalie Daniels from Great West, which is the plan administrator in the audience, if you have any questions that I can't answer.
My, my, we have a discuss and undertake action on the employee deferred compensation.
Motion for approval for discussion?
Second.
We have a first and second discussion. My first question would be, you say it's a new one? You had the 457?
We have a plan through ING, and they offer the 457 plan, it's my understanding. So this would be an additional plan that we could elect, we could elect to eliminate ING.
That's where I was getting at. Why would you have to, 550, 457?
It would, it would be up to you, whether or not we had to.
What is the difference in the premiums, cost, or service pieces to this, to give apples to apples? apples to apples and I, ING giving one service and the state giving a second, both services?
Uh, well, there, there's no fee to the city itself. It would be, employees have their own fees and it's based upon how they elect to invest their money that they contribute. And I, I'm not 100% certain on ING. I did finally get in touch with someone there. They have not come out since they set up with this. My understanding, they have not come out since they set up with this and I believe it was 2006, but the gentleman that I talked to said it's $15 per year, per employee, and he also has a fee based on what funds you invest your money in. And it's my understanding that the state of Tennessee is not a per-year fee. But it is based on the fund that you elect to put your money in.
The discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to see who the base is on it, see what percentage it is. I know we've got Great West with the county does that and there is a good question there as far as what the rate is on that. Also, the employee contributions to that plan, what it would be and the distribution amount between the different levels. Will the employee, will the baseline employee be allowed to contribute percentage-wise as much as the city manager?
Well, the state or the, correct me on, I'm not sure who puts the limits, but you're only limited a certain amount that you can contribute to these plans by, by your age. If you're.
If it's an open 401K, man, I'm not, I don't believe that it's what it's, I think it is.
Would you all like to approach the podium? It looks like you might want to say something. You're welcome.
Somebody, I know that if you're less, if you're under 50, you can't contribute more than 17,000 a year and if you're over 50, it's 22,500. But I don't know how that exactly.
Any actions on that?
That would be up to you guys. We have the option, we have the option to it.
We can, but we don't plan on it.
However, we, the city fully funds the TCR retirement for every employee, so.
And we'll continue to do so.
Correct.
Thank you all for being here and maybe there's other questions that might be more logistics that you can answer. Other discussion from the board? Questions?
I just think it would be great if we're going to do, move forward with this and give them the options that, as we do with the county, we have meetings that sets down with representatives and see what it is and gives them all the full options and the figures and everything. We have those quite often up there.
They have said that they will come and meet individually with every employee that wishes to, to contribute and as we go forward, any new employees that wish to enroll in the plan, they'll come out and sit down and speak to you individually.
So, Chris.
Well, just to clarify, you were saying ING, we are paying $15 per? The employee is. The city doesn't pay for either one of them. The only expense to the city is my time during payroll.
Okay.
Because I have to upload the file and mail, I mail ING a check, they would be an ACH payment.
Do we have any idea how much money our employees have vested in ING?
Uh, ING plan has roughly $250,000 in assets right now. And the gentleman told me 12 participants, I believe there's only six currently still active in the plan. And I know of three that want to be in it, but we had no way of contacting them until recently to find out how to sign them up.
Is there, I guess this is a question for you and the city manager. If memory serves me right, our health insurance is going down by 8%. Is there any way to take that amount of money and figure out a formula to place, match in, in this forum so as to encourage savings?
Absolutely. Yeah, we can always do anything you want to do. Absolutely. We talked at the last meeting that we would just roll that into next year in case we had a big increase, but yeah, that, that's got to be a savings and we can do anything. We can just kickstart it, but this is a 100%.
Six out of 50 doesn't sound like we've got a lot of people participating.
Well, they haven't come back out to try to promote it either.
Yeah, right, right. But if we were going to ask, if we were going to do this and ask these people to do it, if we could give any sort of match, even if it's small, like a half a percent or something, then we, we, that's, that by virtue is, is encouragement.
Right, and this is 100% employee voluntary, employee contributory, no, right now, no city contribution. This is just if you went to a bank and opened up a savings, I'm just using simple terms for me because I, I don't understand all the tech, technical words, but it's just however you want us to proceed with, with whatever.
And they did say the option, if you elect to match anything, you can do it based on a percent or on a firm $10 a paycheck or something to that effect.
And the reason why we're here is because you have to designate the group that we go with.
You have to sign the resolution.
How, how is the money invested?
It's based on the employees, correct?
They choose.
They, they choose, they'll have choices.
They, they have their own account, they go online, do their own thing, they can call them. We do not have any control or any input in that at all.
But we, we control the investment lineup, so you have about 25 investment options to choose from.
Okay.
Go ahead, yeah.
So we work with an outside investment advisor as well. We meet with, I work for the treasurer, so the treasurer, chief of staff, the system treasurers for legal and investments, the chief investment officer, they also manage the TCRS pension fund. We meet quarterly on the investments and on the program as a whole, so we do have oversight of those that you as a participant can choose among that lineup.
Okay. Like I said, it's true, I've dealt with it before and I understand the reason we have so few members now is because the economy's been in such terrible shape the past few years, they are not willing to divide their income, their intake, any more than what it's always done. As the economy gets better and spendable dollars per household increases, you'll see a big rise. And we're starting to see a rise in savings now, low yet, even in this early state of recovery. So I, I'll, I look forward to grow a great deal with the options that you're going to give them. And I know, I know what you have, you have versed by notice and things that you're investing in, a level of risk factors. And so that's, that's great. All the people, less risk, younger people more, that's kind of how it works. So I, I don't personally have any problem with giving them the option to do that, as long as they're fully informed and answer all their questions.
The one thing I would say is since 2006 and not much participation into your knowledge or city manager's knowledge, ING not being a service oriented or customer service oriented, if this company, state of Tennessee that you've presented, is offering exactly the same and/or more programs or better programs, I would be in favor of that. I do understand your statement about, but I would not be in favor of matching a employee savings account or, not retirement, 401K and such, because at that point, we're spending the city's money giving to the employees over and above what their annual income or their, their salaries or whatever they earn. So that would be my stance on that in that particular statement. That's not what we're voting on now, but just wanted to make that comment. Other discussion?
May I just clarify the fee? The fee for the state of Tennessee program, the 401K and the 457 is 25 basis points, so it's a quarter of 1%. I don't know if we covered that. But with that, the, the website and quarterly statements, I, I work for Great West Retirement Services, I'm the client relationship director, and Glenda Stone would be the local retirement plan counselor that would be available to meet with your participants to explain to them the features and benefits of, of each program, budgeting, we do retirement seminars with TCRS annually, so we are focused on service. Just wanted to add that.
And can I add that if we do approve this, we need to select a start date and select whether or not, and when if we decide to get rid of ING or not offer ING anymore?
Okay, the motion on the floor now is, could you repeat the motions? Just discussion. We had a motion.
Yeah.
For discussion.
For discussion.
All right.
Yeah, he did say motion for discussion.
For discussion.
I'd like to see if we can give it to the employees and let them have some input for the, how many would like to, to look at doing away with one, picking up the other. Once they have all the facts and figures, I know there is a service fee with this and I have, let's, I won't press my opinion at this time, but I, I think they should have the option.
We did that question.
I'm sorry?
We've already had that meeting?
We did, Chief Cooper is our biggest participant and he was in the meeting with us, with Ms. Lance and I.
Was that with all the employees?
Uh, it was two of the employees that are in the plan right now.
I think it should be with all the employees, give them an option if they get into it now or not. And if part is solving one and getting to another, I think those employees that are currently involved, they should have some say so.
Any other discussion? Would there be a motion for action at this time? The request from the board was discussion with other, was it? Did we make that motion?
Only Cooper and.
Do you need a motion for that discussion to take place?
Oh, I don't believe it. No, I just, only motion if we're going to approve it.
It'll be handed with staff and brought back to us?
Okay.
Any other comments from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Items for discussion, line A, miscellaneous updates?
Mayor, I, I just want to take a moment to recognize staff that work on what, where you are currently sitting. A couple of you on each side are a little closer. We've, we've moved the podium in the middle. We've got some new cameras, some new projectors, hopefully some better sound. Anybody? Maybe not? Nobody? I can't see any head shaking or not, maybe you can, but we, we feel like it's a working project, it's the first night we've done it. So there's going to be some bugs coming out of it and we'd, we'd like a little feedback, obviously, but Justin is back here and Justin kind of spearheaded this project for redecorating this, redoing, redesigning this. They've completed the installation of the audio visual and we will be streaming on the, the web soon. If we're not doing it tonight, I'm not sure, but the gentleman's here with that company. So a lot of positives that, that I think have happened with one of our capital improvement projects that we've undertaken and I, I feel like it's been a very positive result. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous updates? Staff comments? Chief Cooper?
Chief, first.
Oh, go ahead. Ms. Pugh?
I have a PowerPoint if it works. I think it's a little slow. I'm excited I get to be the first one to test it out. I can't see. Uh. Don't it tilt on it?
Thought it would.
It does. We'll figure it out.
As city manager mentioned, we have new audio and visual and all things that are new sometimes have to be worked through, so I appreciate your patience, just a minute. We'll see if we can get Ms. Pugh's PowerPoint up.
And if I can, why don't you, the people at home, send some comments in on how they're picking up the transmissions and things, picture better, whatever, they can contact city manager Hyatt with any comments they may have. Put them on the conversation website would be great. We can't see what you see at home. Please, keep it here and quick.
I have the September financials. So we are, we have completed the first quarter of the, the year and our target number would be 25%. Our county sales tax are at 22% and our local sales tax are at 22%, while our state shared sales tax are at 23. Court costs are at 20% and the business taxes at 18%. Property taxes just went out the first, or actually I think it was this week, so we don't, we haven't hit a percentage on that one yet. So our total overall revenues at the current time are at 16%. The next slide shows your year-over-year and our court fees are, one of the targets is up 13.5% and the property taxes actually, even though we haven't collected that much, are up 33%. Overall, we're up 2.6% in revenues. Our expenditures are looking good so far. We are, general admin are at 37%. The reason for that is the workers comp and the property tax, or not property tax, property insurance all has to be paid out in January as well as data processing, July, I'm sorry. So they have, they skew the numbers for most of the year. That, I am watching the engineering line item because it's already at 39.64%. Another line item or fund that is over is the traffic fund and that's due to the purchase of the new traffic car. We did not go over budget, but it skews the budget because that line item is so large. And fleet maintenance is at 34% because of all the maintenance we do at the very beginning of the year, getting all the cars ready to go through the emissions, it has to be done by the end of August. But overall, we are at 25.43%, which is right on target. And then year-over-year, we made a lot of changes this year and we added two new funds and we shifted payroll taxes to each individual fund instead of general fund. So this one will look skewed all year. The important number is that we're only up 5.7% for the year. And that is my financials for this. I apologize, that slide didn't get changed.
Questions? Comments from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other staff comments? Chief Cooper?
This is not city business, but kind of is. We're a small city, we have a few city employees and everybody knows everybody, so I have some news. Everybody knows Captain Hughes, our training officer, we call him Gunny, and he has two year old. Two year olds have a command of the English language, but they don't have a, a prevalence to the meaning of their, their command. And he lives sort of out in the country, so their interaction with the neighbors, it's not like, it's like a subdivision, but the two-year-old discovered that the neighbors have brothers and sisters to play with and he's an only child so far and asked Gunny and Mrs. Gunny if they could buy him a brother or sister so he'd have somebody to play with. Responding to that request, Mr. and Mrs. Gunny went to work. Mrs. Gunny is pregnant with triplets.
Oh, wow.
So we're expecting in May, they're on vacation right now, resting up so he can come back and enclose his attic and have more bedrooms.
Excellent. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Any other staff comments? City attorney comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing further at this time.
Communication from the commissioners. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everybody for coming out as always. Another thing I just kind of wanted to make a comment is we're up here for y'all, so if you do have comments and interests or concerns, we want to hear it and I appreciate those who have called and voiced their opinions because without your communication, we would never know what you wanted. So I'm here to serve you and I just appreciate any time that you give me your input.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
No, ma'am, nothing tonight.
Commissioner Sutton?
I would also like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and their input and I talk to people every week on the phone. If you call me, just give me a moment and I will try to call you back. Keith there called the other day a couple of times, we played a little phone tag, but I finally got back in touch with him. And we are open to suggestions and your input is very important to us. As we talked about earlier about term limits and things like that, we work for y'all. We, we serve for y'all, so never quit that. We've got a delegation now that I think is a permanent feature from Pulse and Plus and we appreciate them coming out very much and, and their input because there's a lot of subdivision has the same input, their concerns, it should be effective. Other than that, I would like to ask at the end of this meeting that the scout troop be able to come up so we can possibly get some photo shots with them, because I think part of this is to meet a person in government and I would think, I would be pleased if they could come up and take a seat in our seats, in our chairs and get some photo ops for them. And I think we're going to have some certificates, is that correct?
We can.
We have, we passed, well, no, I know, we, we will have some certificates coming out to you in the future and we've got some pens we give you tonight.
Yeah, I asked him to do that during the meeting. I sent him a text.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
That is, we're definitely, I sent the city manager a text during the meeting to go get some pens to give to them after the meeting, so that, we'll definitely do that. Speaking of term limits again, I don't, I guess it's, it sits very, very personal. Speaking of term limits again, I don't, I guess it sits very, very personal with me, and it comes with a discussion I had with Commissioner Carroll a month ago, and things that I've heard in the last month out campaigning. And Patty, it basically is that you've told citizens that the only way they can get me out is term limits. And actually, a month ago, in this very room, you said, we'll never be able to get you out. You said that to me, and it's very odd that the youngest member of this board is the senior member of this board, and I feel that I'm here for a reason. I'm 37 years old now. I was first elected when I was 25, and three times I've voted to lower your taxes. I've never voted to raise them. The previous board that sat here before me voted to raise taxes. None of those people are here. I feel that that is a big reason why they are not here. I'm not going to say that I'm any more fiscally responsible than any other member of this board that's currently sitting here, but I promise you that if you look at my voting record, I am that person. I am for each and every one of you, and I will not waste your money, and I will not vote for your taxes to be raised if it's going to be a waste. I don't have a problem with it going to a referendum. If the people really and truly do want that, then that is perfectly fine, and they do have the right to have that put on a referendum. Why they've not mentioned it to me, I do not know. I have no idea why. If that's what they want, then I'm perfectly fine for it, but I just wanted you to know that that is what's going around. And it hit me, it hit me pretty hard, because I feel that I have given 12 years of my life for this city because I really believe in where I live and what I want this city to become. Many times, everybody here doesn't know my story, and it's not any more spectacular than anyone else's. But I've lived here my entire life, and I went to school, a private school in Nashville called David Lipscomb. Fairview had nothing. I was laughed at when friends would come back to Fairview. We didn't have anything to do. When I got out of college, I wanted to change that. I wanted to dedicate my time to my hometown to make it better for future generations. And that's what I intend to continue to do, as long as the citizens have the ability to keep putting me up here. I've sat in all five of these chairs. I've served as a commissioner, I've served as the vice mayor, and I've served as the mayor. I love what I do up here, and I want to come back as long as the people are allowed to put me here. Thanks, Mayor.
I'd like to remind everyone that we have a survey on our website, www.fairview-tn.org. There is a survey there, a bullet button for you to do the survey on the park system, and as City Manager said, we will be working towards a new survey, and this is a way for us to continue the communication and to continue the citizens' input. So please make your mark and take the survey, and look for the future surveys coming. Any comments can be made at any time at that website. Again, www.fairview-tn.org. There is an open comment section, and it is addressed, and it will be addressed by some staff or commission, whomever it deems necessary. Guess at that point, I'll ask for a, again, thanking the Boy Scouts that have come and their scout leaders for showing that effort. Thank you very much. We will take photographs at the end. Thank you again for being here, all the citizens. Do you have a motion?
I have one more comment, just because I was addressed directly. I'm sorry if Commissioner Johnson thinks this is a debate for me, but I do want to say that this had nothing to do with him, him running. It was something people had said, and I just wanted to bring it to the table before they left, or they could have left, so that's all I have to say.
Second for adjournment? You have a second?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Boy Scouts, will you...